All right. And I'll call to order this January 8th Friendswood City Council meeting and announce that we have a quorum. In case you've noticed, the former, Mike is not here, and he is caught in air traffic hell. So he's got landed somewhere where he didn't want to land, and I think it was College Station. Is that right?
Correct.
So I'll be running the meeting tonight unless he shows up. If he shows up, he can gladly take it over. Tonight's invocation will be led by Friendswood Police Department Chaplain Mo Mays, and then we'll also do the pledges after that.
Well, I was, I was asked to share a little quick devotional today, and you know, what I'd written, had taken some notes today, and I didn't know what to say, to be honest with you. I know our answer should be go to the Lord, and that's what I do, you know, but, but we, as a word of comfort in this time, our city has experienced a heartbreak. I wished I had the words to, to change that, to take that hurt and pain away, but what took place on December 23rd set in motion a journey for each one of us. A journey that's unique to each one of us. As we go through the days ahead, my encouragement would be to show compassion to your fellow man. We all will need grace to get through this. The Bible tells us 2 Corinthians 1, "Praise, praise be to God and Father, Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of compassion, and the God of all comfort, who comforts us in our troubles, so that we can comfort those in any trouble with the comfort we ourselves receive from God." Naim 17 says, "The Lord is good, a stronghold in the day of trouble, and he knows those who take refuge in him." And finally, Matthew 5, "Blessed are those who mourn, for they will be comforted." Let's pray together. Father God, we come to you today with so many feelings and hurts and emotions swirling around it, swirling around us. I pray that you would calm spirits, spread compassion and grace over our people. Father, comfort them in the time of loss, the time of brokenness, the time of confusion. Father, take them in your arms and help them. Feel your presence each day as they walk through the journey. Father, help heal this city. Help us be more like Jesus each day as we walk through this journey with our friends and family. Father, be among us and lead, guide, and direct us, that we may do your will each day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, next up is the council comments, and with the rest of council's forbearance, I'd like to speak and kind of following Mo. Our town has suffered a sorrow from an outwardly capricious act of violence. We'd all hope that we would be spared this horror of our age, but unfortunately its specter has visited us, and now one child is gone and another is gravely injured. One of our own, city Friendswood staff member and his family were marked by the shattering loss. This has been a gut punch to every family in our city. I've had the great fortune to have gotten to know Matt Riley really well. Matt has a poet's heart. He's one of the kindest, most gentle men I have ever known. He manages our library with equity and composure. The library staff loves him, and the patrons respect him. He encourages innovation from his staff, and as a result, our library is an award-winning facility and widely used by the community. Matt stood up, supported by his family, and spoke a eulogy about his son Ethan at his funeral. No parent ever, ever wants to be faced with having to do this. Matt's words gave us all insight into what kind of person Ethan was and what kind of man he could have been. It was painful, poignant, and sublime testimony. At the service, it was a group of high school-age boys, friends of Ethan's, dressed in black, sitting in a pew reserved for the pallbearers. Prior to the start of service, they one by one crossed the aisle to hug Ethan's family. The ache and solemnity etched on their young faces broke my heart, and it brought home the wide rippling effect of this tragedy on our community. These boys should have been out horsing around, dreading the start of school after the holiday break, instead of carrying their friend to his final rest. I've searched for the right words that may allay the pain of the Riley family and maybe help us understand, and I have none. There's a branch of philosophy that reasons that as concepts enter a culture and are universally understood, words are created to express the notion clearly as a form of shorthand. This is why there's no words. I can find that because we don't ever want these situations to be explainable. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you, and we'll continue. Let's start down here with you, Sally.
I would just like to say that Steve, you said that beautifully, and I have nothing to add. My prayers are for peace and comfort that surpasses all understanding, because there is no way to understand what has happened here. So Steve, thank you for saying it so beautifully.
Trish?
Can I go last?
Oh, you want to go last? Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Steve, for saying it so well.
It's back to you.
Well, I've lived in this community for over 40 years now and dearly love this community, and I've seen the best of the best come from Friendswood. I've seen the hearts and the giving nature of so many people in this town, and so yes, when we are faced with something like this, it is inexplicable, and words cannot explain. So my intention tonight was to announce that I would be running again, seeking reelection for the city council position, and I do plan to do that. It is an honor to serve this community. It has been an honor the last five and a half years, and I would be honored to continue. And I guess the thing that, that drives me the most is that we have to deal with the inevitable changes that are occurring in our community and in our world, and sometimes we cannot control those changes, but we try to manage them, and what we need to really do is to try to hold on to that sense of community and that sense of family and value for each other that I think this community's been known for. So that's it.
We're up to item six, with the present the city Friendswood Five Star Spirit Award for the third quarter of 2023 to Sergeant Jeffrey Kimberly.
Five. Five. Public comment.
Oh, I skipped one. I'm sorry. Public comment, I'm sorry. I have one, I have one, John Ellisor. That won't be the only mistake I make doing this.
Well, good evening. I am John Ellisor. My wife Deanna is with me. We moved to Friendswood in 1977. We have loved living in this community. We raised our daughters here. They're 13-year students at Friendswood Schools and had a great education. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Friendswood. My dad came to Friendswood in 1939, and my mom came in 1940, and within about four months they were married. And so that, God bringing them together is what brought me here, so. But I've chosen, after much deliberation and consideration and prayer, to run for the city council position that will be vacated when Councilman Rocky ends his term, and so I will commit to listen, to study, and to work hard if elected, and I appreciate any advice I can get from you guys and any, be happy to answer any questions that I can. So thank you for allowing me to make this statement.
Now we'll go to the special recognition.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. There are four times a year that I get the distinct pleasure of recognizing one of our outstanding employees, and I can assure you, we have 200-plus outstanding employees that work each and every day, but every now and then, one of them goes a little bit further above and beyond their call of duty. So if I could ask Sergeant Kimberly to come up here. Several months back, you may recall getting an email from me that was from a parent of one of our Bales Intermediate Students. The Bales Westwood campus was undergoing a lockdown drill, and the parent's young child was autistic and unfortunately was found in the hallway when the drill started, and as you can imagine, something of that magnitude is very jarring and very traumatizing for the young man. Sergeant Kimberly located the young kid, stayed with him, and walked him through it, and the parent was forever grateful. She sent a note to the city that, I don't know who the officer was, but my kid can't stop talking about, about him. So thank you, Sergeant Kimberly, for all that you do to keep our kids safe, and you are being recognized for our five-star spirit. Do you want to introduce your family here?
Yes, so I have my wife Crystal, and my mom and dad, Janice, and it.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we're up to item 7A, a presentation of discussing regarding the Community Economic Development Committee by Stephen Ray. Is that right?
Not Stephen, but.
Oh, and Susan. Susan has a moment.
Mayor Pro Tem, council, good evening, Happy New Year. I just want to introduce Susan here, who is the Chair of the Community Economic Development Committee, or the CEDC, as it's lovingly known, for, don't want to step on too many toes here and kind of get into her stuff, but the group's been working hard over the past year, putting together a messaging campaign, and I'd like her to come up and visit and let you guys in on, on what's, what's been thought up and how we'd like to move forward with it.
Thank you, Stephen. Hello, everyone, and Happy New Year. It's a pleasure to be with you today. I'll admit willingly that this is my first time to be in this room with all of you, so I hope, like others, I don't fumble either, Rocky. But there are some slides, but let me start first by just sharing that there, I'm really proud to be part of this group. It's a seven-member volunteer group that really has their eye on the target of making Friendswood continue to be such a prosperous city, and obviously helping the business community accomplish their goals of prosperity. So we did, we spent all of 2022 looking at a strategic plan and developed that very boldly, very experimental, and actually with a lot of great thought and vision. Outcomes from that were seven initiatives. So we then spent a good portion of 2023 looking at how to prioritize those and take action on our first item. And our first item out of that was a natural item, but that was to collaborate. We felt it was very important. We're not an island as a committee. We have strong support within the community of other organizations, and because of that, we wanted to collaborate with these three organizations that you see on the slide. And talking with them, they used a football term, and I know there's a big game tonight, they asked the CEDC to quarterback the idea of bringing forth a contemporary story, a contemporary message about Friendswood's business community, its climate, and how we can help to retain the companies that are already here, but also how do we help attract and grow the companies that we're proud of, that are part of the Friendswood community. Through that collaboration, we spent then time back in the CEDC meetings sharpening our words. But before we got to that, we decided what would be most beneficial is we had to ask the others in the community, what were their thoughts and feelings? So we put together a series of questions, went out into the community, talked to 25 different businesses, variety of different industries and different sizes, and to make sure that we were hearing them, that we could understand where their challenges were, where, why are they here in Friendswood? What brought them to Friendswood? Why do they stay in Friendswood? But also, how could we be helpful? How could something like this tool of modern-day messaging help them? Then we moved on. We talked to brokers, real estate brokers, property managers, to make sure, again, they're trying their best to fill space, to bring companies here. How do they talk about Friendswood? What's their message to people like that, those prospective companies? And then we finally landed on a partner. So our Bay Area Economic Development Partner is some group that we know we collaborate often with, and so we brought them in to talk to them, asking them a series of similar questions we asked the brokers. How do you sell Friendswood? Because they're the Bay Area, and we're part of that entire geography with them. So in talking to them, we had, we hit upon some outcomes. We created, the purpose, we really wanted to create kind of a uniform story. Everybody's going to have a different way of saying it and delivering it, but we thought we'd hit upon some key message points. To start with, we wanted an overarching story, something that was quick and simple, that anyone could repeat, right? So that's what you see here, that Friendswood is a forward-looking community with a proud past, strong traditions, and a space to grow dreams. Think of ourselves as very entrepreneurial. So imagine you're sitting on an airplane, and someone says, "Where are you from?" You say, "Friendswood." Tell me about Friendswood, especially if you know the person sitting next to you is in the business world. This is where you could lead, and then you can trail off. But how do you trail off? So the CEDC took it a step further and created a little bit more weight to these points and came up with these three items. We really felt like one concept that talked about us really well was the fact that we are a proud city that values our family ties. Let me stop a minute and tell you, these are words and phrases that actually came out of our interviews. So we helped refine them as a committee, but we wanted to use the words of the business people here in Friendswood and the brokers and our partners to be able to give it back and to know that they believed in these words, too. So Friendswood is a proud city that values family ties, educational excellence, a sense of belonging, safe neighborhoods, and an environment where residents support and care for one another. Next item, and elaborate on Friendswood, is a welcoming city with a collaborative business community, loyal customers which contribute to the prosperous economy, a talented and capable workforce, and hopefully a growing one, an encouraging entrepreneurial spirit, and touted as a city that's on the move. Again, helping prospects see there's a vitality here. Final item concept was Friendswood is a community with a big heart. Obviously, we just demonstrated some of that today. And a strong backbone, longstanding traditions, and active charitable and civic organizations, and an exceptional quality of place to live, work, and play. So this is where you would then pick up and use your own phrases, your own ideas, as we're talking to prospective businesses or companies, again, that are trying to expand here. So what are the next steps? The next steps that the CEDC sat on and wanted to propose to you is upon approval, if you think this is worthwhile for us to continue on this path, that we see that we would share this back with the people that we interviewed. I feel very passionate about that, because if they took their time, they gave us their talent and their resources to be able to put this together, we owe them that report. So that would be the first group we're going to talk to, the people that we talked with to get to this point. Next stop, we got to go back to the collaborative group. We've already met with them twice, and we want to meet with them again to say, "It's done." And now, how can you use it within your own organizations to bring forth that more contemporary messaging? The next place we would do an update is on the website, the city's website. As people are shopping and they hit upon Friendswood as a possible spot to relocate or expand in, we want that to be telling this story. So the city's staff would work on creating these message points and any other pictorial images that would support it. Certainly, we would encourage you, as leaders of the community, to take advantage of these points whenever the occasion arises, that you're giving remarks or speeches, presentations, maybe these are tools that you would find helpful in talking to the audiences that, again, might have a business flair to them. So that's where we tend to land, and this is what we've been working on and wanted to give you an opportunity to see it. Provide any comments, we welcome that. Sally is our city council liaison and has been a very active member. I do want to do two shout-outs, privilege of standing at the podium. Stephen and Aubrey have been gems. Clearly, we wouldn't be able to get to this point in the process without their professionalism. So I want to thank them.
I just, I'll start. I would like to say that I think that this group has worked really, really hard from the ground up. Susan's actually been in charge for a little over a year now, so she was working on the team and then was willing to take this over. I don't think you mentioned the groups that you collaborated with, but it's FDED-C, DFA.
I wasn't sure.
I apologize if you already did. Yeah, there it is, okay. And I know that you're looking at branching out a little bit further than that, the Chamber of Commerce, but I think that this is excellent, and you're part of this, and I've given y'all a few updates on this as we've gone on, but I think Susan said it beautifully, we're trying to get one cohesive, consistent message out to the community, so no matter where you look for Friendswood or who you speak to, we're all kind of singing the same song. And I think it's excellent. I think y'all approached this beautifully, and I do appreciate your leadership, Susan. You've done an excellent job. And thank you, Aubrey and Stephen, y'all put with a lot out of all of us.
We keep asking for more and more data, and they keep delivering, so we're real proud of that.
I would be very much in support of empowering the CEDC to continue.
Well done.
Susan, that was an excellent job, and you did very well for your first time. I do have one question. What do you see as the next steps?
Some of them I've outlined. One, to just, I won't repeat all of them, but to give you the highlights, I want to go back out to the interviewees. I think that's a real important first step. I also think the updating of the website, talking back to our collaborative organizations, making sure that you all are armed with this information, and you can use it whenever you're making remarks and presentations. So that to us, once approved, we'll put together a nice packet so that it's more than a slide presentation, so that we can deliver it to the business community and the organizations alongside you.
That was a, a job well done. Thank you, and I really appreciate your words about going back to the businesses that you interviewed. I think that's very important, too, so thank you, and thanks for the collaboration with the others. It's great.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're moving on to item eight, which is a zone classification change from neighborhood commercial NC to downtown. Aubrey will be presenting. Do I have to read this all? Look, look, look. Okay. I now call to order this public hearing regarding a proposed zone classification change concerning property located at 903 South Friendswood Drive, 0.34 acres being Lot 2 of Southern Bree's, a subdivision of Galveston County, Texas, according to the map or plat thereof, recorded in volume 18, page 353 of the map records of Galveston County, Texas, to change from neighborhood commercial NC to downtown District DT. Only halfway done. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views regarding a zone classification change concerning property located at 903 South Friendswood Drive from neighborhood commercial to downtown district. Anyone desiring to be part of this hearing should have completed a public hearing comment card in the foyer and submitted it to the city secretary. At the podium, each participant shall give his or her name and address in order to provide a proper record of the hearing. The rules allow each person five minutes to present information. However, I encourage everyone to be brief and to the point as possible. I would now like to request that staff summarize the subject of this public hearing.
Good evening. So, excuse me. This is, we had a request last month of the next-door neighbor at 901 South Friendswood. So he received the notice that his neighbor was changing, so he hopped on board as well. So this is 903 South Friendswood, within the downtown district boundary. Again, it's the goal to get all of the properties within the boundary changed to downtown. I counted, I think we have about approximately 20 left, so maybe we can start working on getting some more of those changed. But it complies with the future land use map, required notices were sent and published, and it was a positive recommendation from P&amp;Z following their public hearing on December 18th.
All right. Is the applicant here and wants to say anything?
You want to say anything?
You're welcome, he'd want to. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? No cards, okay. There being no one else desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing. 8B, consider an ordinance regarding a zone classification change concerning property located at 903 Southwest Friendswood Drive to change from neighborhood commercial to downtown district. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have Robert and Joe, okay. Any comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Item nine, impact fee, this will be presented by Hill Arias. So I have to read again?
Yes, sir.
All right. It is now 5:59 PM, and I now call to order this public hearing regarding amendments to the land use assumptions, the capital improvement plan, the maximum allowable water and wastewater impact fees. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to appear and present evidence for or against the proposed amendments to the land use assumptions, the capital improvements plan, and the imposition of an impact fee. Please note that the public hearing rules remain the same as previously noted. I would now like to request that staff summarize the subject of this hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, I'm Hill Arias, I'm the Director of Engineering. Wanted to present, do a quick presentation on the land use assumptions and capital improvements plans, and including the maximum allowable fee per service unit for, in impact fee. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on November 16th, 2023, and in acting in its capacity as the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, they filed a written comment, they received a, an update, and they voted 5 to 0 in favor of recommending, recommending to the city council the adoption of the maximum rate. The maximum rate that is included in your packet is $3,721 for water and $1,675 for wastewater, for a total of $5,396. And I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions? Anybody that wants to speak on this?
Hi, I'm excited.
Okay. There being no one else desiring to speak on the item, I now close this public hearing. There being no one else desiring to speak on the item, I now close this public hearing. Nine-B, "Consider an ordinance approving amendments to the land use assumptions, the capital improvements plan, and the maximum allowable water and wastewater impacts fees." Do I have a motion?
Steve, I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the motion to waive all water and wastewater impact fees on quote-unquote "infield development lots" and "large lots" that can be divided into four or fewer lots in the future. And if someone will second that motion, I'll discuss it and tell you why.
I'll second it.
All right. Infield development lots and large lots by their nature and very definitions are lots situated in areas that are already having infrastructure in place. And if they were developed after 1990, they have already paid the water and wastewater impact fees. And I don't think that these particular lots should have to pay those fees twice. Friendswood is rapidly approaching build-out, and we should incentivize the development of these infield development lots and larger lots, and not penalize them by forcing them to pay impact fees twice. I've talked to developers, Brett Banfield for one, who's told me many times that a lot of young people don't want to live on these big, huge lots, that they would like to have them smaller lots and build nice houses on them, and that's going to be all that we have left. We've got the Whitcomb property that's fixing to be developed, we're going to discuss again later today. We've got Georgetown that's being developed, and we've got the Fairhandle. Then what we have left in Friendswood is solely large lots that can be divided into smaller lots and these infield development lots. And I think that we should incentivize their development and waive all those impact fees. They're already going to have to pay tap-in fees, but that infrastructure is already there. So that's what I'd like to see happen with this amendment.
I have a question. How do we decide what lots this applies to?
Well, if you look at the map that was the backup material in here, all the infield development lots are already highlighted in purple. And then you have other people who own lots. Friend of mine, David Gotrow, bought a three acre tract behind me and wanted to carve off one lot and build a house by his son. And he's looking at a whole bunch of fees for replating, upwards of $10,000 just to replat. And all the money that you're talking about, tap-in fees, another $10,000. And then you look at this, and it was $3,600 and something for water and another $5,600 before you even start to develop your lot, you're looking at $20,000, $25,000. And then you look at the situation where all of a sudden, that house cost a lot more per square foot to build than it did just 10 years ago. Each time the city raises impact fees, raises water and sewer rates, raises water tap-in fees for the same water tap-in meters and stuff, you're increasing how much a house costs just to start to develop. $20,000, $25,000 before you even pour any cement or anything. And then you have the fire marshal who wants a turnaround, safety turnaround, that's another 50, 60 grand before you even start building a stick. Here in Friendswood, that's what's happening, and that's how much it's going to cost per square foot just to build a house, where you could have built a house for 360 10 years ago, now it's 560 or 660. A kid wanting to come live in Friendswood is going to pay 760. That's why a lot of our employees don't live in Friendswood, they live elsewhere and come and commute here to Friendswood. So I would just like to see us be cognizant of the fact that these impact fees have an effect on all of us who live here. And that's what I need to repeat that's.
I've got a quick question. And just trying to understand, so if you took a three acre lot in your example, which would be one home, and then you put six homes, half acre lots.
But my amendment was for four homes or fewer.
Okay, okay, which is okay.
Which is already identified in the.
Sure. So it's three acres and four homes? I'm just curious as to the water requirements of four homes is quite a bit different than one home. So you have impact fees associated with how much water an average home is going to bring in, how much sewer is going to go out, but four homes, I think, is going to be quite a bit different. I suspect it's going to be four times that amount. So I'm just questioning, Marad or Hill, whoever the right person is, as to, like, Marad raised his hand. So am I thinking about this right or am I thinking about this wrong as to impact fees? If you've got four homes connecting to the system and their potential use, I would think that's considerably more taxing to the equipment, infrastructure than it is to have one home on a three acre lot.
So the short answer to that is yes. The impact fee charged looks at a 10-year window, five years back from today's date, and then five years forward, and accounts for all capital improvements that provide capacity capabilities for our infrastructure. That's capacity at the wastewater treatment plant, capacity at our water, surface water treatment plant, and the ability to provide healthy drinking water in the sewage services. The costs are what they are. We have regional agreements with the City of Houston for our surface water treatment plant, we have an agreement with Gulf Coast Development, Gulf Coast Water Authority for our wastewater treatment plant, and those are massive facilities that cost on order of magnitude $100 million plus if we were to go build our own. So theoretically, of our 14,000 active connections we have today, 12,000 or thereabouts are residential. If all of them were to just subdivide into two, not four, you would be doubling our demand on the system, and we wouldn't have the financial resources to provide the services for all of them. Now granted, there's nothing to say that everybody can divide their lot into two, so that's being a little bit exaggerating on my part. But the question, and I applaud Councilmember Graffon for at least giving us a line, whether that's four or less or whatever that is, we need something definitive in our ordinance in order to waive those fees. So what's not paid for by impact fees is going to be paid for by our utility rates, our water and sewer bills that you pay every other month. So if we don't raise enough money on impact fees to offset the demand on growth, then our water and wastewater bills will have to go up.
So are you saying that would be moving the cost from the person subdividing and building these homes to the general population of Friendswood?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would like to mention personally that a developer who's going to develop a tract of land doesn't pay these impact fees. He passes those impact fees through the unit to the home buyer who's going to buy that. So saying that you're passing along to the general public, everybody who buys a home in Friendswood from a developer, whether it's D.R. Horton, Horton, Sorel Homes, those are passed along. What I'm talking about are not very many properties, and what I'm talking about would be negligible to any impact. And our water sewer rates are high enough now that our reserve is two or three times what it should be. So we have plenty of money in the waterworks and sewer department to negligibly waive these fees to very few properties, and under situations where like my friend David Gotrow is looking at all these expenses just to build a house by his son. And so what we're talking about is so negligible that we're not going to worry about 24,000 homes all of a sudden coming online. And I just think that they've already been paid for once. I don't know, most lots have between a four and a six inch line, water line to them, or they have sewer that's running to properties right next to them or adjacent to them. They're going to have to spend the money to tap into it anyway. The city's not going to spend that. They're going to make you do it, right? They're going to make you come and tap in. And that tap in is a fee for however much it is for sewer, but I know if you put a two inch line, it's $12,000 to tap into that line. If you put a one inch line, it's.
That's an impact fee, so what you're suggesting is to waive that so there wouldn't be that.
You would still have to buy the meter.
Buy the meter, and the meter itself would cost 300 bucks for, for 330? 330 for a one inch meter. A two inch meter is a little bit more expensive than that, at 500 and something change. So the tap-in fee is the impact fee that you're suggesting to waive?
All right. That's what I'm suggesting.
Staff is not opposed to whatever council collectively agrees on. I'm just suggesting that the cost of operating the system is what it is. So it's either paid for by impact fees, it's always going to be paid for predominantly by water and sewer fees because that's the largest revenue stream on an enterprise system. Impact fees are intended to offset the cost of growth.
And I'd also like to mention that the 24-inch line that we're running from 2351 to support the southeast side of Friendswood is being paid for with a large grant that we received dollars for. How much was that for?
So the city received a ARPA allocation.
ARPA, yeah, ARPA funds.
And so, yeah, a large portion of that is being allocated towards the 24-inch.
So our city's always going out, not only reaching out to the developers who have to pay these fees, but they're always looking for ways to help us pay for these pipelines that are being run to support areas that are undeveloped. Now, these areas that I'm talking about, these lots are situated in areas that already have infrastructure in place.
And I apologize, that 24-inch line, though, those calculations that were grant-funded are taken out of the equation on the impact fee. So they weren't counted for in the calculation of the 54.
Yeah, and if they had have been, we wouldn't even be raising fees right now, would we?
No, they were not in the equation. So the 5,400, if we counted the, those projects, the 24-inch that's funded by grant dollars, the number would be a lot higher than 5,400. But again, that.
And I'm being specific now. I'm being specific on infield developments and lots that can be divided in fewer or less. And that's defined in the ordinances.
I have a question. Do we have an idea potentially how many situations this would apply to? I mean, y'all threw in a number of 24,000, that's a lot.
You want to go to the backup material? Plat in the backup material that shows you all the infield developments.
It depends on the zoning. So for instance, when you mentioned the three acre lot, you can theoretically, based upon our density, fix nearly seven lots on three acres. But if you were, for SFR, but if you were to rezone that property to multifamily garden homes, for instance, then you can potentially get 30 homes on three acres. So, and, so not 30 homes, sorry, that's about 12 units per acre, but it's a larger number than.
And I'm not suggesting you waive the fees for those. I'm talking about four lots or fewer, that's defined in the ordinances right now.
Correct.
Any other comments?
I do, I have a question, I guess, just to make sure I understand. So we're talking about a small number of lots of acreage right now, I guess owned by a smaller number of people. And if they all chose to do this, what kind of impact would it have on the rest of the population paying? Do we have any idea?
Not off the top of my head, because you would have to look at every property in its current zoning and see if it could be subdivided into four lots or less. So your house, my house, you wouldn't be able to get four lots out of it.
But you also have the requirement of at least 90 foot on curb and gutter or 120 foot on open ditch. So that is going to limit how many lots can be subdivided. By the nature of the ordinance, the way they currently are written, provide for a situation where you can't put 27 homes, multifamily homes on a lot if it's zoned, single-family residential.
If they change the zoning, though, is council okay with that? But they still keep it to four or less? So if they didn't, if it's SFR right now, and they were going to do four or less, and they changed it to multifamily but still kept it to four or less, are we okay? Because there's nothing in this, as proposed, there's nothing that would preclude them from changing the zoning. The only restriction is they can't create more than four lots.
And waive impact fees. All I'm calling for is a waiver of impact fee.
Yes, sir.
So Steve, one more question follow-up. So is this the place approving of this amount? Is this the place to put in that kind of language or any other changes that we want to make? Are we asked tonight just to approve the fees that have been developed and presented?
So the fees were developed over the past six months, and the fees that's identified in your backup material is the highest allowable. So we did all the calculations, or namely, Freezing Nichols did, and we reviewed it. They determined what our costs were and divided it per the equivalent single-family unit connection. And whatever that figure came out to be, in this particular case, it was $10,600 per unit, they divided it by two because state law requires that you reduce it by 50%, and that's what's in your fee. So you can't go higher than $5,400 or 53 and change. You can make it less, and it's completely an arbitrary decision on the part of the governing body if they choose to go less than that. But what all I'm saying is that our cost for providing those services, including our contractual cost with other regional partners, as well as our prior issued debt that we're paying debt service on, those are all fixed costs. So our revenue streams are impact fees and water sewer rates.
But just to follow up, maybe I didn't ask the question well. I thought we were being asked to approve a dollar per unit rate tonight.
Correct.
And my underlying question was, is this the time to make, to take up adjustments to the ordinances? Let me just finish. Or is that a separate, because all we're being asked to do tonight is, is there a rate? And I say yes or a no, I suspect. Is there another opportunity then to bring it up as a different item, or is it more appropriate to bring it up as a different item to make adjustments to the ordinance language? Because all we're asked to do tonight is a dollar per unit number. That's all we're being asked yes or no on, right?
You can do both.
Okay.
You can do the, I do ask that a dollar per unit gets.
They're saying accept the highest amount.
I think you've spoken more than you can on this. Let me ask my question, and it's similar to Joe's, I think. Now, we have a motion in a second, which we have to dispose of some fraction before we go back to the main motion. Is it possible to hold off on that motion, approve the original motion, and then leave an agenda item for the city to come back with more detail about Robert's proposal that we could take up in a subsequent meeting? And I say that because as an engineer, I can't make a decision on something I haven't seen pen and paper on, to be honest. So, not that I'm disagreeing with it, I think it might be a fine idea, I'd just like to see the analysis of it, but I don't want to hold off.
So the short answer is yes, we can do that. Pardon my question, but I believe there was no main motion. So Roberts was the only motion, and it was seconded. So if you deny that.
Then another motion has to be made.
Correct.
Right.
Or you would amend the motion. I don't know, because if you deny the only motion on the table, the item's done. So per Robert's rules. So y'all can vote on it, and we can bring back something to y'all next month and change it, too. That's a viable option, too. I can't tell you off the top of my head, because the analysis that was offered would be based on current zoning, but there's nothing in the proposal that restricts somebody from rezoning the property. So if it's just any property that can fit four units or less on, I can't tell you off the top of my head how many units that impacts.
We can't make a follow-up motion to approve it as stated?
You can amend the current motion on the table, but if you were to vote down Robert's current motion that was seconded, there is no other motion on the table.
Can we table the whole discussion to the next meeting and rewrite?
I think we need to vote on my amended motion.
I'm going to make an amended motion. If you can find the amended, I'm going to. Well, it's not really an amended because it was the original motion.
It was the only motion, yeah.
It was the only motion, so which one are we on, so I can read it right?
We're on nine-B.
Nine-B. So I'd like to amend the motion that Robert made to approve, as is written in the agenda, and to take up his motion at a subsequent meeting.
We can do that.
I second that.
So any vote that you currently take right now will be on Trish's amended motion, and then, and then we'd bring back, but then you'd have to still take a vote on the original motion that Robert made.
Chair, let me repeat that. We would have to vote on Trish's amendment. If that passed, then we would have to vote on the original amendment, and we would have stake in the ground to have you guys come back at a subsequent meeting with taking up Robert's suggestion. If we do not pass the amended motion, then we're dead in the water.
We go back to Roberts.
We go back to Roberts, and then we have to vote.
And if that fails, you go back to the original.
If there was no original motion.
Then we'd have to propose a new motion.
There was no original.
You didn't do it as amendment, you just amended the original one.
You said amended, but you were the only motion that was made, so yours is.
Let's just make sure, nobody else talk, please. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, everybody, everybody just hold on, let me try it again. Okay, we have an amended motion, which has got a second, and if we vote on that, that will be approving the original motion and requesting that Robert's discussion. and requesting that Robert's discussion be brought up at a subsequent meeting.
Point of order. Not the original motion. It would be to approve what was written in the agenda.
In the agenda, excuse me, you're right. Is everybody good? Okay, we're going to vote on the, on Trisha's amended motion.
So I do have a quick question. That would approve the motion in the agenda?
Right here, and put yours on a subsequent meeting.
Okay. So the amended motion is to approve the original motion as it is in the agenda, and to allow for a subsequent meeting to discuss the information that Robert's brought forward for possible consideration?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
You already had your second.
We do have a second.
I have a second.
Okay. Yeah, we had a second. Okay, so it passed 6-0.
Now we go back to Roberts' amended motion.
Go back to my amended.
Yes. Well, the amended motion now, well, so...
So now it's the motion as amended. You, you approved to amend the motion, the main motion. So now the main motion is what, Councilman?
Is back on the floor. And the main motion, which is what's...
That's backwards. That's backwards.
We just approved Trisha's motion.
Right, we just approved, we approved to amend the main motion to be Trisha's motion. So now we vote on the main motion as amended, which is Trisha's motion.
Correct.
Again.
That's Roberts.
Oh, that's different.
Okay. Okay. Everybody understand it?
So we're voting yes.
So you're voting?
What we just, what I just...
If you want to have the same thing, you know, yes.
It doesn't make sense, but it's Roberts.
It doesn't make sense. It really doesn't.
All right. So all in favor?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Now I thought I was up to speed.
Basically, you're voting for the same thing twice.
You're voting for it twice.
So Roberts rules requires that if you have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded, if someone amends that motion, you have to vote on the amended motion first, and then you go back to the original motion to vote again as amended. That's Roberts rules.
The amended motion puts the original...
It's confusing.
Okay, amended motion put the original as written in our, our, on our paper back on the floor.
Yes, sir.
And now we're voting on it. Are you good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor? Anybody opposed? None? Go 6-0.
And just for the benefit of the council, we will bring back next month an analysis based on the four-lot threshold that Councilmember Grifon suggested.
You had to do this on the one meeting.
I'm sorry. It's your fault, isn't it?
All right, we're on...
Mr. Roberts.
We're, we're on item 10.
10A, sir.
Huh? 10A. Consider authorizing the professional services payment agreement with Madison Development Corp. LLC regarding the assumption of the costs associated with the creation of the Friendswood City, City Center Public Improvement District and the establishment of the reinvestment zone number one, Friendswood, Texas.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mo?
So as council may recall, we've been talking about the creation of a public improvement district and a tax increment reinvestment zone on the Whitcomb property for quite a while now. The proposed project known as Friendswood City Center has a lot of costs associated with the administration, the creation and the administration of public improvement districts and tax increment reinvestment zone, both for, both for the developer and the city. As a component, to recoup our costs and live by what we had promised, and that is the cost for the operation and creation and maintenance of these districts be solely on the owners within the development and not on the rest of the taxpayers. This is an agreement that would reimburse the city for our consulting services for attorneys, consulting services for PID and TERS administration, and any other consulting services and costs that we may incur. The developer's going to pay, pay for those costs.
Any questions? All in favor? Go 6-0. We're now on 10B. Consider a resolution authorizing the creation of the Friendswood City Center Public Improvement District, which includes approximately 106.472 acres of land situated in the Sarah McKissick League Abstract Number 549, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, which property is generally located south of FM 528, east of Bay Area Boulevard, north of Oak Drive, and west of Clear Creek, and includes the portions of the rights-of-way of Towns Road, Blackhawk, and West Bay Area Boulevard. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got that, Lottie?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any, any comments or questions? Mo, do you want to say anything?
This is, go ahead, councilmember.
Please.
This is a continuation of the Friendswood City Center, the Whitcomb creation of a public improvement district. So in December, y'all created the tax increment reinvestment zone number one. It established the lion's share funding source of paying for the public infrastructure at this site. The other component of that financial metrics, matrix, was the creation of a public improvement district, which is an assessment that's applied on the private properties held on, within that 106-acre district. So each of those, the current and future landowners in that district will be assessed an additional charge, similar to the West Ranch Management District, but it's a flat assessment fee that will go for paying the public infrastructure, the water, sewer, roadways, parkland, and a portion of the fire station for this site. The remaining portion of the fire station is paid for by the tax increment reinvestment revenue, that increment that's generated for that site.
Mo, I didn't see the financial plan for the PID in the backup material, but you were throwing out some numbers in our agenda prep. So how much, what was the fee that we were going to, to levy?
So it's included in the next item, the development agreement, but the, what it is, is there's a tax stack. So for instance, as a Friendswood resident, my total tax rate across not just the city of Friendswood, but drainage districts, the Harriet Gallison County, FISD is about $2.20 or thereabouts. There will be an additional assessment on, on top of the folks that are in the Whitcomb property, the private property owners that are on the Whitcomb property, and that estimated tax stack is about $2.77. Now, there was some disagreement or some discussion with the developer that it could possibly go as high as $3.05. But again, the PID assessment is not a function of valuation. So whereas I pay my taxes based upon the value of my house applied, with my tax rate applied to it, they will pay their taxes with the, the valuation, with their tax rate applied to it, plus a separate assessment that would be the equivalent of either 277 or 305.
So the TERS is allocated to value, and the PID is a special assessment?
Correct.
Gotcha.
And you said that was a stacking of the taxes up to, to something, not, not an additional amount?
Correct. That's a total.
And that is both the residential properties and the commercial properties?
Every property within that 106-acre district. Again, all the, the infrastructure costs, all these costs are solely borne on those properties and no other properties outside of that.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem, I did have one question.
Yes.
Just to, to Marod. I just, for clarity, because, you know, we've been looking at different documents and different numbers in them, and, and noted in this particular agreement that the total project cost of financing included, administration costs included, was estimated in this document to be $100 million, which is quite a bit different than some of the other numbers we've seen. So I just wanted to make sure, what, what is included? Why is that leaning kind of different?
Sure. So there have been a lot of numbers thrown out.
Right.
So as part of the creation of the tax increment reinvestment zone in December, there was a preliminary financing plan that was included that estimated that the total cost of public infrastructure, water, streets, the Blackhawk extension, Towns Road extension, the detention creation, the fire station, they estimated the total cost of that public infrastructure to be $58 million. It's a preliminary finance plan. Until the developer bids those improvements, we don't know what the total cost were going to be. So they have put in these agreements a cap at $100 million, that they can't exceed $100 million for those costs. Realistically, the numbers will come in less than the $58 million, or at least the developer is fairly confident they'll get those numbers in a lot less. What this agreement does is it establishes a cap at $100 million, and it also establishes a cap at 70% participation. So the development agreement, everything else that we're discussing, that tax increment that's created based on the value that was on the ground at the end of 2023 versus the value that's going to be on the ground in 2025 and 2026, whatever that delta is, which is going to be considerable, if it's valued at, if the project in completion, the total valuation, $757 million, we're getting $8,900 a year off of that property today. At 757, we're going to get about $4 million off that property. Well, 70% of that $4 million will be set aside to pay back the debt service for this public infrastructure. If the project doesn't reach that valuation, they're still capped at 70% of whatever that increment is. So if they're only generating $2 million a year off that property, then they can't squeeze out a penny more than whatever 70% of that $2 million increment created is.
I, I just wanted to clarify it for, for those that watch this later. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor? 6-0. City manager's report.
10C.
Oh, I'm sorry, 10C. I'm sorry. I'm just getting dizzy from all the yellow on this page. Consider resolution authorizing a development agreement with Madison Development Corp. LLC for the Friendswood City Center development. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have the motion and a second. Any discussion? Anything new other than what you said, Mo?
Of course, I have a question or two.
Of course.
Sorry.
You're right.
Okay, so just several easy ones. It, in the agree, in this particular agreement, there is a lien-to-debt ratio, or value-to-lien ratio of two to one, but there's a mechanism in there that it can be modified at a later date by city manager approval. I just wanted to understand what, under, is, what circumstances would that ever happen? Because obviously, that's a, so protection there for the cities to have that kind of language in there. So I'm just curious as to why would we ever, or is it just a, you know, kind of a underpinning just in case?
So you may recall when we discussed this previously, our initial lien-to-value ratio is going to be three to one, and that's to make sure that we have three times the collateral in, in exchange for the, the debt that's going to be issued by the public improvement district to pay for the public infrastructure. When our financial advisors ran the metric, the, the data as, as theirs did as well, we weren't able to achieve this project within a two-year window at the three to one. It would take five or seven years to get the full development of this project, which the, the beauty of it is trying to get, this one project alone represents seven times worth of our annual growth. The last couple of years, we've been getting about $100 million worth of new, new value, new construction. This single project represents seven times that. So we agreed on a lower lien-to-value ratio of two to one. We still have two times the collateral for the, the exposure that we're putting out there for the public infrastructure. The statement that y'all are authorizing the city management, manager to finalize this negotiation has nothing to do with the lien-to-value ratio. So what we're asking y'all to do is to authorize me to finalize this agreement in predominantly the same fashion that you have in your exhibits. We're just changing one or two words here or there, but anything of that significance I would be required to bring back to city council.
No, you're exactly right. I made a mistake. There's other things in there that are, city manager, you're correct. I stand corrected. That is, it goes back to city council, if I remember correctly.
Yes, sir.
So sorry about that.
It's okay.
I set you up. Sorry. One, another one is that, that we've, as part of this development, we've got the fire station, and I'm just curious, I wasn't, wasn't clear to me, just confirming that, as I read this, that the fire station as, or any other city, it's turned over to as city-owned property at the end of this, as they get built, would they have any obligation into any of these payments for the TERS, or any other, any tax obligations, or infrastructure, HOA kind of, or POA kind of requirements? So is there any other requirements that, that hit us as obligations to the city for those assets?
So from a property owner standpoint, the city being a property owner, we have no obligations to property associations or homeowners associations, but we will have maintenance and operational cost of the fire station and of the public parklands and the roads, et cetera. So that's where our 30% of that TERS increment that's, that I was mentioning earlier, when I said 70% of it goes to pay the debt service for the public infrastructure, the remaining 30% we retain to pay our operational cost for keeping the fire station operational and ongoing, as well as making sure the park is properly maintained. And that's likely going to, that's on par, if not our largest park in the city of Friendswood when it's all said and done. So it's going to cost us some things, and as well as providing police, fire, and EMS services to those properties due to the population that's going to now be housed there. So our 30% increment will go to pay those costs.
Perfect. Thank, thank you very much. It's all my questions.
What kind of impact would that be for police? What are we looking at for employment?
So you may recall in November of 2021, council agreed to police the population ratio of 1.56 officers per thousand residents. For the number of units they're proposing out there, you're looking at probably one and a half to two officers.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor? Motion passes 6-0. Now it's the city manager's report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Protem, and you're doing a fantastic job. Sorry for all the back and forth.
I don't want the job, and I'm happy to have Mike come home.
The very first item I have, I'd like to highlight our annual Friendswood Arbor Day event. This has previously been known, many years ago, as the tree giveaway, but in essence, it's, it is what it is. On Saturday, January 20th, we'll hold an event at Centennial Park starting at 8:00 AM in which over 100-plus trees will be given away to first-come, first-served residents that have to prove their residency before they're giving, given a tree. It is a very popular event, and years past, we've been sold out, so to speak, in less than 30 minutes. So if you want a tree, come early and be prepared. The next item I'd like to highlight is our outstanding administrative services office. They received the certificate of achievement in financial reporting, so this is for our annual CAFR and our audit report. This is for fiscal year '22. 35 on the screen is not incorrect. They've received this award for 35 consecutive years. I know another Gallison County city that just received it for the first time this year. So to have it going on for 35 years is outstanding and well done by Kaitina and her staff. The next item that I'm pleased to report on is the $10 million grant from the Texas Water Development Board. You may recall, the state of Texas had been working with some members of our city council and our staff on getting some much-needed drainage dollars to lower Clear Creek. The $10 million is part of the inter-local agreement that the city has with Harris County Flood Control District, Gallison County, Gallison County consolidated, as well as yours truly, the city of Friendswood. This $10 million is going to go towards the Whitcomb project. We have that, plus our drainage dollars that we issued bonds for, that we've issued bonds for based upon the authorization in 2019. That's going to go to terracing and detention at the Whitcomb property. So we're partnering with the developer on the detention component of it, and partnering with Harris County Flood Control District and those mentioned there on the, the terracing component. So we're pleased that that came through. Employee service awards. The city held its annual Christmas dinner back in December 8th. We had a number of employees that were recognized for their years of service, anywhere from five years all the way up to 45 years, and it wouldn't be a Christmas party if I didn't forget an individual. So tonight, if you'd bear with me, I'd read the, the recipients that were recognized that evening, as well as those that weren't able to attend but did receive a service award. So in the five-year category in information technology, we had James Anderson. In emergency services, we had Sherrell Grant. In public works, we had Matthew Chaveneck-Cech. In parks, we had Mauricio Figaroa. In public works, we had Michelle Cantu and Myra Rangel. In city manager's office, we had our very own Stephen Ray. In public works, we had Carlos Larios. In public works, we had Jorge Rendares. In library, we had Drew Watkins. In police department, we had Clifton Lyles. For the 10-year category in PD, we had Ashley Hemphill. In municipal court, we had Ethan Baker and Don, Don Continia. In police department, we had Corey McCombs. Parks, Caleb Mull. Police, animal control, Robert Lee. Public works, Jose Sanchez. Emergency services, Stephen Simmons. Parks and Rec, Robert Voss. And police department, again, for the 10-year category, Christina Dusek. For the 15-year category in PD, we had Jackie Grosso and Quinn Pearson. In the library, we had Lisa Wilkins, and I missed one, Jose Lobo in police department. For the 20-year category, public works, we had Seth Castillo and Myrice Woodward. In municipal court, we had Kathleen McCumber. In PD, we had Kevin Crouch, and in parks and rec, we had Jeanie Valdairas. At the 25-year category in PD, we had Terri Doyle and Ron Pallage. In information technology, Roger Speed. For the 40-year category, which you're hitting the unheard-of categories, we had Judge Jim Woltz. And the 45-year category, which I don't think this record will be broken, was our very own Mac Mascada in public works for 45 years. So it is a testimony to the fine... So, um, it is a testimony to, um, the fine, uh, organization and the culture we have here in Friendswood, and it starts with the mayor and council, and we thank you for your support and leadership, and, uh, I, it's outstanding anytime you have somebody that's here that long. So thank you for your support. Uh, I would like to also recognize in the city secretary's office, Raquel Martinez. Uh, so she is our, um, deputy city secretary that recently received, uh, Dolores McKenzie Scholarship, which, uh, for those of you that have been around Friendswood for a while, that name should sound familiar. Uh, upon her retirement from the city of Friendswood, she's still continued to have been active in the, the Texas Municipal Clerks Association, and a scholarship was created in her honor. The $500 that Raquel is getting is gonna go towards covering her continuing education requirements as she continues to maintain her certification in Texas Municipal Clerks. The next item that I'd like to highlight is the distinguished service award that our very own Jennifer Hale, senior court clerk, received from the Texas Clerk, Court Clerks Association. Jennifer is an outstanding employee in our municipal courts, uh, department, uh, and she was recognized for outstanding service to the, not only the, the organization, but also to the continuing education that she teaches within the municipal clerks industry. So great job by Jennifer Hale. And lastly, I wanna highlight, uh, joint effort by our volunteer fire department and our community development, GIS division. Um, you, the best time of year, if you're a kid, uh, as a parent, the sirens lasting all day gets a little bothersome, but, uh, I, I'll refrain from complaining, complaining. Uh, as you know, our volunteer fire department goes through, uh, Saturday in December and drives throughout the entire city, uh, with Santa Claus on the truck, and they throw candy to kids and bring, uh, good cheer and well wishes to our community. Uh, this year, Aubrey and her team have been working with them to develop a tracker. So one of the biggest complaints that the fire department in the city gets from time to time is they just miss Santa Claus, or they sat outside all day and didn't see Santa Claus. Uh, we ran a beta test this year and will go live next year, but it will tell them where Santa's been and when to anticipate Santa, uh, so that they don't miss that opportunity to see Santa. So thank you to our police, our, our fire department for putting this on and for CDD for helping out.
Very good.
Yep. And that's my report.
All right. 12A. Consider authorizing a professional services agreement with the Stantec Consulting Services, Inc. Complete a pavement condition assessment on the city, maintain paved roads, and implement a pavement management system.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Wanna update us on this?
Thank you again. Uh, so the city has, uh, a little over 186, uh, centerline miles of roadway that, uh, it maintains. Uh, in order to evaluate the condition of, uh, uh, every street the, uh, city uses was called a, uh, pavement condition index. Uh, so that's a numerical index that, uh, indicates to you, uh, the, uh, quality of the, uh, the street, um, and gives you a good, uh, indication as to, uh, how old it is or how, uh, much longer life you can expect out of it. So we have a proposal here, uh, uh, for an agreement with Stantec Consulting, uh, Services, uh, and, uh, they will survey the, uh, city streets, uh, collect pavement condition and image the roadways. The last time the city had this done was in, uh, 2018, so, uh, we're due for a, uh, update here. Uh, after that's, uh, been done, a, uh, PCI ranking, uh, will be, uh, created, and, uh, the city can use that to, uh, prioritize, uh, repairs, uh, and, uh, maintenance, uh, moving forward. Uh, so the cost of the, uh, services under, uh, this agreement would not exceed $75,250, and, uh, we expect that to be completed by, uh, July 31 of, uh, this year. Uh, two of the biggest things that, uh, they're gonna be looking at are, uh, the two things that, uh, drivers are probably most, uh, concerned with, and that's the quality of their ride, and, uh, what does that street look like? Uh, so that's, uh, what they used, uh, they've got a formula, they, uh, uh, combine the information that they get from, uh, those two categories and, uh, develop a pavement condition index. That's what'll, uh, allow us to make, uh, decision, data-driven, uh, decisions moving forward.
A little quick question. Doesn't it look at not just the surface but the subsurface as well?
So that's the, uh, different, main difference between, uh, uh, this year's, um, uh, survey versus the, uh, the one in, uh, done in 2018. Uh, the one done in 2018, uh, did look at, uh, the subsurface, and it did put a lot of emphasis on the, uh, the subsurface. Um, and what we found, uh, is, uh, we would see a, uh, pavement condition index that was a, a little bit lower than, uh, uh, streets that we, we might drive a little bit more often and, uh, were more familiar with, and, uh, the, uh, the surface really didn't necessarily reflect what was going on underneath, and, and so that, uh, uh, kinda didn't, um, help us, uh, to drive those, uh, decisions because, uh, really what we were, uh, looking for is what's happening on the surface and, uh, how is it affecting your ride? Uh, the two main things that, uh, drivers are really concerned with.
Any other questions? Please make sure you do John Scott Street.
Uh, yeah, we will. Yes.
All right. All in favor? Motion passes six zero. Okay. I believe we're on 13A. Consider an ordinance ordering the city of Friendswood general election and special election to be held on May 4th, 2024 for the purpose of, one, electing a mayor and council members for positions one and three, and two, voting for or against the reauthorization of the sales tax and use tax for street maintenance for another four years. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Got those, Letty?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? All in favor? Motion passes six zero. 13B. Consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year '22, '23 by approving the budget amendment 12 and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. All in, what? Yes, I'm getting there.
I'm sorry.
I'm following Letty's orders, please. I had to turn the page.
I'm so sorry.
Turn the page. Okay. All in favor? Motion passes six zero. Consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year '23, '24 by approving a budget amendment two and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. All in favor? Motion passes six zero. Consider a resolution certifying that the election precincts in Friendswood portion of Harris County qualify for an exemption from the certain bilingual requirements of the Voting Rights Act, as well as the Texas Election Code, and directed the mayor to provide a written summary to Harris and Galveston Counties concerning this exception, exception. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any comment on that? Any questions?
Do y'all need an explanation as to?
I, yes, I would like an explanation as to why we're asking for this exemption.
So since, uh, the city of Friendswood is within two counties, both Galveston and Harris County, uh, we're obligated by state and federal law to provide a translation for our ballots in four languages on the Harris County side in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, and Chinese. You can file for an exemption with the secretary of state if the population, uh, within the, the, any of those categories is less than 5%. Uh, the city hired a demographer. Typically, in years past, when we contracted with Harris County to run our elections on the Harris County side and Galveston County to run our elections on the Galveston County side, it wasn't an issue, cause Harris County already had to provide it in four languages. Well, this year, Harris County has opted not to provide, uh, election services, so we're contracting with Galveston County to run our elections for both, both counties, Harris and Galveston, and Galveston County would prefer not to have it in four languages, uh, for cost and ease of their administration and operations. So we hired a demographer, did an analysis, and were able to confirm that we have less than 5% based on a precinct level analysis, and as such, that's what we're asking the mayor to file the exemption for with the secretary of state.
Did this demographer work for free?
They did not. Um, and...
So we had a cost.
We had a cost. Uh, if we didn't do this and Galveston County refused to negotiate with us, we would have to purchase our own election equipment, which would have been vastly more expensive than, uh, than the cost of the demographer, but yes, they could have also chose to just translate the, the ballot.
Chris?
We're not asking for an exemption of all four, just for two.
Just for two. We will still...
Just Vietnamese and Chinese.
Just Vietnamese and Chinese. I just wanted to make that clear to the audience.
Correct.
Any other questions? All in favor? Motion passes six zero. All right. That was 13D, right, Letty?
It was, uh, D.
Yeah.
I mean, C, we're on the...
Oh, we're on?
We're on consent agenda.
Yeah.
Consent agenda for 13D.
All right. I need a, a motion for this.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second. All right. All in favor? Passes six zero. Uh, it is now 6:52 PM, and we will now recess into and conduct an executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section 551.071, to seek the advice of the city's attorney regarding clause number 18 CV 0108 Tostado versus City of Friendswood in the 122nd Judicial District Court, Galveston County, Texas. And the second is section 551.071, to seek the advice of the city attorney regarding the Fair Housing Act, uh, section 551.071 and 551.087, to deliberate offers of financial or other incentive, uh, business process, prospects to the city that seeks to locate, stay, or expand in Friendswood, and to seek the advice of the city attorney on legal matters related thereto, section 551.074, to deliberate the annual performance of our city attorney. Yes. We, the, I now reconvene the open meeting of the Friendswood City Council, announced it in accordance to section 551.102 of the Texas Government Code, no action was taken in executive session. 16A. Consider an economic development agreement for the redevelopment of a vacant building in the downtown district for commercial purposes. I need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. 16B. Consider an economic development agreement for certain improvements to an existing building in the downtown district for commercial purposes. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes six nothing. We, uh, we have the, uh, delayed the discussion of the city attorney's annual performance